Did you get those, uh?
Yeah.
All the bids?
No, it was off. So it was like, what's this stuff? Oh yeah. I can't find them.
I'm like, I knew I didn't bring them to you. I don't know, I just got carried away and just didn't even think about it. I'm like, well, they gotta be sick.
Yeah.
No, they're not where you think they are. Thanks, Bobby.
Hello, Jeff.
Is that a Philly shirt?
Okay.
That's it.
Yeah.
Well, that's a Philly shirt. Oh, boy.
It's the only thing I got to kill my head with.
That was free.
I did, yeah.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I don't know. Hey, it's an important thing. What's wrong with our soda machine?
Do I have a soda machine up here?
Do what?
What's wrong with the soda machine?
Which one?
What do you mean?
One downstairs. That wasn't plugged in. It's not plugged in. It says sold outside. I left it plugged in. I'll see if it blows up.
Pepsi's pulling hers out. Really?
When did that happen? Huh?
What day was it? I told you.
All this paper and stuff again. I thought we went paperless.
Yeah, you guys need to come into 20th century.
What happened to Pepsi?
Said they weren't making enough money for the soda machines.
Well, screw them. I'm going to Coke then.
Exactly.
Call Cora Bowl.
Do you get one of these from Brian Mitchell?
Um, I haven't owned one yet. I just got it.
I know.
That's not why the bank anybody trying to get different.
Just circulating some Christmas cards.
And I was waiting through that Bible we got and stuff and got bought at the time.
There you go.
More. Oh, I got that one.
I want to save that one for Melly. If you get Melly one.
Thank you.
Oh.
Either that or it's on your charity.
We're forcing this. All right. Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
I'm just circulating.
You ready, buddy?
Ready, buddy.
We're gonna call the meeting. Order. Do we have any minutes or reports?
I got some addressed to Mr. Wrigley. Those go right in the trash.
It could be Western District elect, you know. Merry Christmas. Any commission committee liaison reports, renouncements, upcoming meetings and/or events?
I don't know.
Here none. First item on the agenda is-
Christmas tomorrow.
Road relinquishment agreement with MODOT. Eric? We're gonna see what expedition is today.
On a mission.
Um, I got the handout here. Mark, you got the agreements. This is that deal that MODOT came to us about-
Half a year ago, maybe, give or take.
I don't remember exactly when and we discussed it then. Apparently, these roads were never transferred to the county back in the 60s. The intersection-
We've been taking care of them anyway, though.
Right. And at that time, we discussed it and, you know, it was basically a verbal agreement that, yeah, whenever the paperwork was done, you all would sign. And so that is done. I got the agreements there in front of you, Mark.
How much are they paying us? Since we're taking it off their hands?
We can go back three years.
Can we just send them a bill for everything we've done on that since we started working it?
You can.
Get a turkey sandwich at the Public Works today.
So I would recommend approval of that agreement.
All right. I'd entertain a motion to approve the road relinquishment agreement. That's such a weird term with MODOT.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
By a roll call vote, such approved. Do we all three need to sign this, I guess?
Did you email these to us?
Yeah, everybody signed, Mark. I didn't email them. Do you want to email them?
No. I'm just gonna say you can email them or put them as an attachment on the agenda. You don't have to make copies then. Do you need this back? Otherwise, it just goes there.
Need to write this in.
Yeah, that's taken.
I can't reach the recycle box.
Can't read. You gotta sign that, Jeff.
The, yes, the custodians. Mainest guys.
At least not mine. You're going, Mark.
They go through the trash or recycle the floors.
So you said, Emmy-
Why am I being colored?
I can email it to Melly then and she can put it on the-
I'm just gonna look at it on the computer. I don't need copies. That's what I'm getting at. If I want to print it out as well. We got copyers right out there. We got a color printer.
Why can't you generate this on a computer, don't you? I mean, that's, is that personal highlighting?
Yeah, this is.
Okay.
I'm fine with scanning.
You don't have a color scanner?
I don't.
You do, don't you? Yeah, so just scan it and we can link it right on the system, right?
That, that would mean that I would do this a couple of days in advance or what's, because I did this 30 minutes ago.
It does. It's not that big.
What, what's your-
Your lack of preparation is not abroad.
I thought only lawyer, I thought only lawyers were as unprepared at last minute.
There you go, sir.
I didn't know engineers had it too. I now understand why bridges fall into the water.
If you don't have copies prior to it, then that, that's fine. I was gonna say you can save yourself making some copies and save some copies and save some trees.
I will just end discussion right there.
All right. Bid, result, discussion, business, 50 West improvements.
Okay. These are hot off the press. Um, I did not actually go through and review everything. Um, but the numbers for every contractor check out pretty close. Um, the main one is Don Schneider's excavating. They, they are the apparent low. You know, we're not, we just wanted to bring these to you, show you where we're at. Um, like I said, we haven't had a chance to review the bids, make sure everything's in line with what it should be, um, check for errors or anything like that, so we're not prepared to make a recommendation of award. But just wanted to, since the bid opening was Friday and Chris was up here when we had the bid opening and thought it'd be a good idea to at least discuss it.
Pretty tight to the engineer's estimate, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's always a little disconcerting.
Well-
The other two are way over.
And then they go up from there.
Oh, do they?
Oh, yeah, there's three.
Oh, I didn't see this.
Three other ones or four others.
Holy cow.
Like I said, we haven't had a chance to look and see, you know, what exactly-
Thought they were all pretty tight, though, really.
They were tight, yeah. When you get past the, you know, the couple high there and then the one low, there's three or four that were pretty close.
Let's use the which we'll see. You'll see some, one low and then you'll see some of them ganged around in the middle. Then you'll have a couple of real high ones. They didn't want to.
They got plenty going.
Plenty going. They just throw a bit out there.
So Don probably cut some stuff to the bone because he wanted it.
These, um, this was a huge, huge project and we did a lot of things in here to make it competitive. Uh, we did optional pavements, um, let them bid either concrete or asphalt and all but one bid asphalt, which kind of surprised me, but it, it showed us that concrete was gonna be tough to build and keep traffic running, which we knew that. Um, we thought they may be able to work around that. Um, so the asphalt came in, actually the preferred pavement type. Uh, we did the alternate for the Greenway. Um, that came in a little under with, from what we were thinking.
Where's the asphalt versus the concrete at?
Um-
Page three?
Page three.
Oh, optional pavement?
Optional. They didn't pick, they didn't choose both. They just picked the one that they would do, yeah. Um, our, our budgeted amount when we did the budget back in August was 3.6 million. So I, I'm comfortable with how things came out based on that. Normally, we see a couple under the estimate, couple over, you know, average kind of being around the estimate, but it's hard to tell. A project like this, it's so big. Um, the county's not used to doing projects on this large a scale and so, you know, coming up with, trying to guess at where the estimates are gonna fall in was a little tough. Um, but like I said, it's a huge project. There's a lot of, a lot of different pieces and parts to it. Another thing we did to, um, keep competition, have more competition was subgrade stabilization. And this also helps us in the long term because we won't run into a huge overrun based on weak subgrade like McCarty Street had last year. I think they had about a $500,000 change order.
Was it more than $500,000?
For putting in shot rock for subgrade stabilization. We did. We set it up and gave the contractor multiple options to choose to stabilize, subgrade, and did the whole length of the project. So we won't, we won't run into any issue with that. So, I mean, I think, yeah, I think it's, they're reasonable bids. Don Schneider's excavating. They're a good company. Uh, we're doing work with them right now on that stormwater job that they're finishing up. Um, I have not talked to them about this since Friday, so don't know where, how they feel about it, but you know, we'll be doing some more reviewing of things and we'll recommend award after we've had a chance to review. Larry and I will look at it and talk about it. Also talk to CNPS and see if there's anything that stands out as-
At the same time, one of the reasons I asked you to put on the agenda, I was just the other day, is also to take a look at the sales tax budget. From Eric's property companies up here. Just make sure that we're, you know, Eric can go through it and kind of do it next year. We wanna make sure that we do understand there's money being associated with the enhancement or not yet. We just wanna make sure we're all on the same page, that we're doing the projects you all want us to do.
Well, as I understand, next year, we're gonna do Frog Hollow? We're gonna do this? Um, we're gonna do, is it Millbrook or?
We're gonna pave Millbrook.
Millbrook. We're gonna do our normal chip seal overlay program.
BRO bridge, right? That's gonna be this year, next year?
We have some stormwater construction, the bridge maintenance.
Where are you at? So, so I can find it. Okay, third page. I got it.
Third page. Um, stormwater design, we're doing that Vaughn Ford Bridge construction, but that, that's all reimbursement from MODOT, but we have to have a placeholder in the, in the budget for it. That Moral Ridge Road Upgrade, I have that on there. Um, what I did in the budget for Frog Hollow and Business 50 is I got, um, um, some money in there for construction engineering and contingency for both of those projects instead of putting that up in the contingency line item up at the top of the spreadsheet.
The stormwater work there at Woodward Lake?
Yeah, that's that Woodward project. That project.
How far off is Lafayette and Dunkland intersection?
We're gonna, um, the, the idea is to bid the project, I think, in March. I don't know the exact date that it would start advertising, but it needs to be awarded and contractor ready to go by the middle of May to build while school's out.
This year.
Yeah.
Start the Highway 50 project?
Right.
We wanna make sure that works down the highway in case a lot of people.
Sure. So I'm having a hard time reading this document. Does it keep saying revenue all over the place and it looks like it's expenditures?
This is the document that we get from the auditor's office.
This, so I'm on page three. It says fund 700 sales tax revenue. See where I'm at?
It just copies that on, that's at the top of each page.
Oh, okay. So-
Is that revenue on there? Yeah, it is. That's something's-
I don't understand why.
Something's goofy in the format and I didn't have time to get too in-depth this morning on it.
So is the 9-8 what we project to actually have in cash or the 9-9 what we actually project to have in cash? 9-8's on the first page.
Mm-hmm.
9-9's on the second page. It looks like they just added together. Do we still have leftover in the last sales tax cycle?
There, yeah, there's some leftover money in, looks like 809.
It appears we, what were we spending that on? Do you recall?
Well, we have some money in 809 that-
We had 1.6 million we budgeted this year in 809.
Mm-hmm.
What are we spending that on?
It's at the bottom of the sheet there, at the last two, uh, or the last page.
The last page?
Yeah.
Okay.
The-
Millbrook, so I don't understand this at all. I'm total, I'm so totally confused.
Well, you and me both. Um, when we got this back from the auditor, they, they changed-
Let me ask some simple questions. Maybe we can just diffuse this without even looking at the document. How much revenue, including carry forward, do we anticipate having next year? 9.9 million?
That's in the, that's in the new sales tax. You'll have 9.9. In the old sales tax, you'll still have-
I see 9950. Old plus new. Is that right? 9950? Okay. And you're proposing, what I can't understand is on page 1, 2, 3, 4, you have 9,757,000. I presume that's in expenditures? But I don't understand some of it because-
That's in 803.
We're gonna spend nine, we're actually gonna spend 9.7 million this year?
No.
Next year.
9.9.
Nine, we're actually gonna spend 9.9? No carry forward, grid zero.
The auditor, we still have 809 left out there that the auditor wants us to keep money in and not move it to 803. And so there's some stuff in 809 if you look-
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay. The end of 803 and the beginning of 809 starts on the second to last page.
Okay. I'm gonna go back to what I was asking. Are we saying we're gonna spend out everything? In capital improvement, the road and bridge, capital improvement, sales tax, when we're sitting here, one year from today, we'll say zero?
No, we'll do $200,000 contingency.
So we're spending it all but $200,000?
Well, they're earmarking it in these certain areas. Does not mean these projects will start or finish within 2014. But the only contingency, you see there's 200,000 on the second.
Okay.
There's also a cooperative project-
I'm just gonna grab a line. I want an explanation, okay?
Yeah.
Because I'm, I really am completely confused. I'm looking at 54907 cooperative projects. It says this year's budget, we budgeted 2.25 million, right? Did we spend that?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't know. From her sheet.
We done any, I don't think we done any cooperative projects.
We did not because we had that cooperative project reserve. That's money sitting there basically as a placeholder.
What I'm saying is we didn't spend it, right? So you're proposing in 2014 budget to spend 814,000 of the 2.25 million, right? Is that how I read that?
814, 102.
The 814?
Yes.
No, 323, 003 would be-
Those two combined are 814, 102?
Let me back up here. Whenever, I don't know why they do it this way, but they have cooperative projects. That's a 907. And then joint project is 920. When it moves to this joint account, when it actually goes to construction, it goes into the joint account, okay? So look down to 920, wherever that is.
It's right at the bottom of that page.
17, 1, 1.75 million.
Okay.
And that's Frog Hollow.
Right.
Okay, and that, that's, um, we're not, the county's not spending all of that. The county's portion is about half roughly, give or take, because the city's contributing their part minus the design, plus the sewer. Um, it's-
So that should show as a revenue somewhere.
It's, yeah, it's like at the top.
Transfer from joint city, city joint account, right?
Yeah, that 836.
So you're proposing, let me just walk through this, make sure I got it right. 343,000 for vehicles, yes? 814,000 for cooperative projects, which is the reserve in Lafayette and Dunkland Street, right? Five?
The 491 won't be spent.
Okay, so that's not being spent?
That's in reserve.
I'm just, that's why I wanted to go through this, because the way it's laid out, it's really goofy on my, I mean, I'm looking at black and green numbers. 525 for bridge construction. Yes, no, maybe? Because I see all these question marks too, 2013.
Question mark, what we did, um, to be able to keep it in the same, to have the money transferred into the same account for projects that carry forward, that money, the contract's still out at the end of the year. We carry it forward to the next year. The money doesn't, what doesn't, you understand, it, it doesn't add to the-
300,000 for BRO bridge, right?
That's money in, coming in, money going out.
In and out, okay, but we're still spending it.
Right.
Okay. Six and a quarter for road construction? 1.75 million for joint projects? Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes.
3.85 million for major thoroughfares, which is effectively business 50, right? 140,000 for the villages, which we do every year. A million for resurfacing.
Mm-hmm.
75,000 for safety. And I don't know what the safe routes to school is, because it's full of question marks.
That'll just carry forward the design contract, whatever's left from this year.
Okay. And that comes out to 9.7 million, what we just walked through?
Mm-hmm.
Plus the contingency of 200,000.
If you go to the last pages-
It's actually 691,000 because the cooperative project reserve, we're not spending. Right?
The reserve on, yeah, will not be spent.
And then on the last page, there's some more stuff.
That's the 809, um, Liberty Road Bridge Design, and then there's a reserve for Millbrook and then a carry forward for that contract since it's not closed out yet.
Is this your answer for that five-year suspension that I was trying to do?
I, I haven't had time to do that. I'll get on that next week or later or after Christmas.
Well, I can try it too. Now, we'll have a whole year in, but obviously you know what projects sometimes it's up for me to tell.
That Liberty Road Bridge Design's gonna be $125,000? That just a guess?
It potentially, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a high estimate. I don't think it'd be that much. Um-
Just seems like a lot.
It, it does, yeah. Just kinda, I base it off of previous projects, what the construction cost and what the design cost was and-
Just, just to go back here, just, um, Frog Hollow project, bridges. So we got oh, 1.76 million roughly, 75 million total there. Only half of that is gonna be ours or? Or is that our half?
No, that's how much we'll spend out. Our half of that shows up on the income, the revenue on that.
I got the city transferring 836,000. It's the first page.
They paid for the design work, though, right?
They paid for the design work.
So they just sent us that much, the, the check less the design work, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
But then we're adding sewer work into the contract, so they're paying all of that and so it's, um-
So you gotta give them the tag.
Yeah. That's what it-
We haven't received that money yet, have we?
No.
From the city? That won't hap, well, that won't happen until we're ready to approve the bids.
Right, which will be next month.
Because until we approve the bids, we won't know what amount they have to transfer.
Yeah, that is, and what date on the bid on that?
January 17 or 19. It's the third Friday, I think, in January.
Okay.
It's out for bid right now.
Are we comfortable with our engineer's estimate on that in light of these bids that came in? Not really.
Why is this, what?
I mean, it-
Are people not hungry right now?
I think the cost of material- I was, I was comfortable with the business 50 estimate. And they came in, I was getting nervous. The first couple we opened in red, I'm like, oh my goodness. And then the Don Schneider's bid it low and you know, that's the only one that came in under. It's estimating, unless you do a lot, a lot of projects, it's really hard to get that nailed down really close, but-
I think Frog Hollow's gonna come in cheaper just because you don't have the traffic to work around.
That's the, that was a killer on business 50.
And the only thing you'll have is time. Business 50 was hard to estimate just because of all the people you had in businesses and doing your, you know, your construction scheduling is make sure that you didn't overly impact somebody and I think that's why our bid-
And your PITA factor. Your PITA factor. P-I-T-A factor. Pain in the butt factor. Because it, it is gonna be a lot of headaches. That, that may be why they didn't bid it low is it's gonna be a- Like McCarty.
And Don Schneider's, they just did the one over there in, in Rainbow Hills. You know, it's hard when you've got to work around that many people, driveways and everything, keeping access.
Why is there such a big difference in earthwork? I'm just curious. On all of them. I noticed you estimated, you estimated $75,000 in earthwork and the cheapest I see is 160,000.
I didn't actually estimate it. CNPS did.
What's the huge variance there? Any idea?
I think CNPS has a reputation of doing a pretty decent job of that stuff. I mean,
Yeah.
That's an enormous variance.
Well, again, there's, there's games that they play when, when they bid, you know.
They get that money upfront because that's gonna be the first thing they do. So they bid it the highest and then they cut back on other stuff. It's like demo. You can bid the demo.
Well, a lot of times, a lot of contractors defer all their profit margin, what they think's gonna be the profit margin in the boldization.
Right.
Just so they get that money upfront. And that's, you know, it just depends on the contractor and how they bid it. You know, if they were, we were turning apples out, we ought to be real close. You don't know how they're, they're playing the game or whether they're trying to get money in quick, so.
That, that's probably the, the one that probably should have reviewed that a little closer before we did it and maybe bumped that up a little bit, but hindsight's 20/20.
We bid, we put in 3.8 million.
Yeah.
We're under 3.8 million.
Yeah.
So what do you want from us?
I don't, we're just-
FYI.
Thanks for doing that because I was curious about that the other day. I'm glad you did that. I'm gonna see where we're at.
I just, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same, you know, same, especially since we had to change our budget midstream like we did with the daughter, to keep 809 around. Just make sure we're all on the same page. We don't want no surprises and we don't want to do all that.
These cash balances, carry forwards, are those as of today?
No, they're, they're outdated, so-
We sit down and do those after we'll be done, this last budget run's going out.
I'm just curious. You know, the carry forward always makes a, I mean,
That'll change.
It's a huge potential difference if you've got-
Yeah, I know. I don't think Joyce has either, so.
Yeah, that's outdated, so it'll, it'll change.
What we really need to do is come back after that's updated and look at this again, so we actually have real numbers.
Well, Larry wanted me to put this together so we could talk about these two and how they relate to each other because, you know, this is the big player in the budget this year and-
I just didn't wanna wait till the ninth, when we all try to do the budget. I wanna get this information in front of y'all so you can have it over the holidays and be able to look at it. I don't know if it's got any more budget.
Thanks.
If you had any budget or anything, so I just-
Well, our next meeting is tentatively New Year's Eve. Do you guys have finals by then?
I don't reckon, but we'll have finals on Saturday.
Carry forwards?
Not all of them.
We'll have all that, right?
Do we need to do a meeting next week or not on this? Or do you wanna mull it for a little while? When do we need, when we're awarding?
The 9th.
I'll leave that up to y'all. If y'all have the numbers together and you're comfortable with it and y'all wanna keep moving.
Carry forward, we'll know all that.
We're awarding on the 8th, right?
Oh, so we don't need a meeting?
I think it's the 8th.
Not on this.
Is it, is that a Thursday?
The day we're approving the budget, we're awarding it.
Oh, that's when we got this, that's right.
One thing-
We don't need next week for it.
Just general feeling from you all on this alternate for the Greenway, what are your thoughts on that?
City paying for it?
I don't have feelings.
No, we were paying for the, the Greenway alternate. The city would pay for that extra curb and, or the extras going from Pioneer Trail on east.
The extra width?
The extra width, taking it from sidewalk to Greenway width.
And that's what the option is?
No. I thought we discussed that, didn't we? We were gonna do that. The stuff that the city wanted to add to what we were doing and that was going from Pioneer Trail on east towards the end of the project.
Okay.
We, it was too late in the game to add that into the project as an alternate. We'll do it as a change order. City will pay for whatever additional cost is.
So this is Greenway going?
From the park to Pioneer Trail.
How much are we saving doing it while we're doing all the rest of the project, do you think? I mean, just a guess, imagine, I'm not promoting to it. It's not on Rick Ricker.
Oh, I'd say probably, rough guess, 25%.
So is the city gonna annex that then after we get all the roads? So, is the city gonna annex that then, after we get all the roads and stuff done?
We'll never get the vote out there. They'll struggle mightily.
Well, I just thought that. Don't get me wrong, thirty years from now, maybe, but.
Well, I mean, next, okay, next five years, they're not going to, and to do it in twenty years.
Those people will voluntarily annex into St. Martin's before they allow themselves to go in.
That's, I was wondering where that was at out there, so. I think if we're gonna do it now, or if we're gonna do it, I think we need to do it now, it's still gonna be under our initial budget, three and a half million, so.
I'd like to see us do it, I think it'll really help that area a lot.
I agree, Carl, I think we should take that alternate.
Eric, I'd like to talk to you sometime about a couple items that were in the bid package, just no big deal, but just, just for future stuff, so.
Okay.
Anyway, but we can do that some other time, or at lunch, so.
Okay.
Are you ready to do Wayne and Creek discussion yet?
Donovan Agenda can't do it today.
I'm not talking about today, I'm talking about when we can get all the agenda, cause I was trying to give him a little break.
I think I, we did the traffic counts, and so I put it in his court to talk to you about when you wanted to do it.
Well, I was waiting till you got done with this stuff, you got all this on your lap, and we're on trial weight, so.
I'd say just anytime next month.
Anytime after January, okay, alright, I'll get with them then.
Yeah.
Thanks, Eric.
Alright, thank y'all.
Yep.
You get surplus title, Debbie? Alright, we're skipping that. Discussion of ambulance maintenance and services. I think you, you, one of you all, you did, Jeff, you wanted to have this.
Just wanna make sure we're all on the same page, and we probably sent a ambulance back out to y'all after Shepherd's trouble shot it, and they went through all the work, and they were a little upset about that. At first, I thought it was just cause we were doing some of the maintenance in-house. But then I talked to Dan, and I talked to Chris.
They're upset, cause we sent it to them, they said what was wrong, and then we sent it out.
Yeah, so Chris said, we sent one out there, and they said, well, it needs brakes, it needs rotors, and then after they did all the troubleshooting, we sent it to you all. And you all just, I mean, you all just were in the circle, cause we sent it to them.
They brought it out, and said it needs brakes, and that's, that's what we did.
Yeah, we're sure, so, I think we told him not to worry about it.
Oh, okay.
But if he, if it goes out there, I think we need to let them, if they troubleshoot, and they find something.
I agree.
Let them take care of it.
I agree, I agree.
I think it's a great idea to do some of this in-house, if y'all got time for it and stuff, so.
I mean, the difference, the difference is, if we drive the ambulance out to you guys, and you guys do the diagnosis, you figure out what's wrong with it, and if you can fix it, you fix it. If we take it to Shepherd's, it's the same thing, then they diagnose it, they figure what's wrong, they fix it, they can fix it. That's the easiest way to do it.
It's no hair off of our chest, and Sam would show up and ask for brakes, and that's what we did.
Well, he came out before, Bill came out before that, and said that it, what it needed and stuff, but it needed tires and a Iler arm on the front, which wherever he had it, he had it put on there, and then he brought it up to us for brakes.
Well, Mike was kinda in the middle too, cause we told him that, for the maintenance stuff.
And he told Bill to send it all to, to public works, and it was just, yeah, it was just a miscommunication, and so.
Yeah, we'll take the heat for it, it's just, we needed, we needed to be on the same page with it, cause we're trying to save some money. We're not trying to screw over the guys that are doing the work at Shepherd's, and it's not, I mean, they're doing a good job as far as I know, so. That's just wanting to make sure we were all on the same page. Now, the contractor, when we got the letters from Jill, I thought they said about two different things. One said we can do what we want to, and the other one did kind of indicate it should be a central bid, so.
It seemed to me it was, the one we got from Jill made it very clear, we can buy anything we want from surplus. No bid, nothing, we can buy, that was the one.
No, she said, I'm in about the ambulance.
Oh, about the ambulance?
Yeah.
Alright, don't worry about it.
About the RFP and the actual contract. Yeah, basically.
The contract does not say exclusive.
Yeah, the contract does not.
Neither did the RFP.
Yeah, it was that everything said, all services need to be maintained, you know, along with.
Right, but that's not exclusive.
Well, Dan said, well, you know, if we knew it wasn't gonna be central, we might've bid it different, which I don't think they would, we just need to let them know, look, don't plan on making, you know, your money on the oil changes, we're gonna probably do those in-house, just just let them know that, so.
Alright.
Good.
So, the email that the gentleman sent, Jennifer, you took care of the discussion?
Tony?
Terry.
From Tony Rackers?
Oh, Tony Rackers.
Yeah. I talked to Dan, I said, let, let Tony know that you talked to me, and that, I apologize, I'm just on my behalf, not for you two, I don't, I think that was kinda.
I agree, it's not the right.
It was dirty, it wasn't on purpose, or malicious, or anything, there was no intent there, so, Dan understood, I called him back after talking to Chris too, cause I didn't understand that we took it out there, they did the diagnostics, and then we went and fixed it, so, yeah, it's cool.
It's bad timing, do we have a contract now, we're waiting on the sign for the next three years?
Yeah, I'll be getting that, and so as long as they're okay, then we're good with the contract, and they are okay, Jeff, they send your conversation with us.
Yeah, you might just call Tony and say, hey, you know, make sure there's no questions, cause there's nothing in the contract that says that, we can't do anything in-house. We're not gonna let them diagnose it and then fix it.
Right.
If they diagnose it, we'll.
We're kinda in the middle, we're in a playing rock and hard spot, cause, you know, we work with them on our other stuff. And I think they kinda gave Jeff a little bit of grief this week about it, so, you know, just as long as we get the word out to them, cause we don't wanna hurt our working relationship with Shepherd's.
I agree.
We still work closely with.
It was a pure accident, Mike kinda did what they were told to do.
Mike, Mike kinda did, I think he caught, he, that ambulance got caught midstream in what we were doing, is what happened. So, it was, it was, that was what happened. Alright, signing a surplus title on the ambulance, we sold an ambulance on Gov. deals for seventy-three hundred.
This is that second one we did?
Yep.
Awesome.
So I entertain a motion to approve surplus title.
Second.
Call roll.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes, my roll call vote's approved.
About double what we.
Here you go.
I wonder.
What, what we sold the first one for?
Well, for more.
We sold one for like forty-three though, didn't we?
Still a lot better than we used to get, so. Take every dollar we get.
I mean, before we went to the Gov. deals, we were selling them on auction, or something for like thirty-five or forty-five.
I think we sold one for like twenty-six hundred.
I about might've bought one that's cheap enough to make a deer stand out of, mobile deer stand.
That's called, that's called poaching.
Is that illegal? Do you have to have like one foot outside of the door to shoot it?
Well, we sold for five hundred.
Well, it was stationary.
Well, the one we sold on surplus? Yeah, we tried that one, that was, let's not say it was the idea that was.
You're on a road, yeah.
Anything else, anything else coming for a commission? They better be quick.
The boiler, did you talk to Air Serv? You know why they didn't bid it?
We mean after the deadline.
Air Serv. Did you call them and ask them to bid it?
What's this?
Well, I'd ask.
Hey, hey, can we not have three conversations going?
I started first.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
You said, is there anything else, and I start talking to Greg.
Okay, what are you guys, what are you guys talking about?
The boiler.
What about it? Is it not working?
I was asking the Air Serv, what, why they didn't bid it. And so, he said he never heard from.
I called the three guys that I usually deal with.
Hell, I thought I asked you to call Air Serv too, cause they did these back here.
No, that's Air Systems.
No, Air Serv did these.
Chillers?
Air Serv did these out here, whatever they were.
No, Air Systems did these.
Regardless, I'd ask you to call, Air Serv is what I'm getting at, and that's why I was asking, how come they didn't bid it, cause I asked them the other night, how come they didn't bid it? Cause I saw Air System, which I thought was Air Serv, and it wasn't, and so, that got to be a conversation, so that's what I'm asking you.
It's her fault.
I thought they were one and the same, I don't know, there's two different things.
Apparently you did too.
No, cause if Air Serv would probably been called, they probably would've gave us a bid, so. I don't know who the hell Air Systems is, now Columbia, Air Serv's local, and I'd like to keep it local.
We get, the problem with, frankly, the problem with doing stuff by emergency is, you don't advertise it, you don't get the full bid list.
No, but if we have somebody specifically we want to ask, because we've done work.
And I remember that conversation, and I remember that conversation very well, because you said, you said get Air Serv, cause they did the work back here. And you pointed back, and I don't know who did the work back there. Air Systems did the work back there, so.
Air Serv doesn't typically deal with boilers too much, do they?
No, Air Serv did this back here. I'll bet you a hundred bucks.
Air Systems put our boilers in.
I don't know what the hell those are, I don't do HVACs, they, these things back here, not back in this room, outside.
The great big things outside.
Chillers, yeah.
Okay, chillers.
Who did the chillers?
Air Serv.
Thank you, alright, I rest my case, I may have your witness.
So, so in the end, it was just a miscommunication, it wasn't any desire.
I wasn't, I was just asking how come, trying to figure out where that there was a miscommunication, so, I don't know, go on.
No, go ahead.
Almost Christmas time, I'm done.
So what is this, Debbie?
Basically, it's a twelve months, a lot of bill is for the tax, sending out the tax bill.
I thought we did that a long time ago, that was in November.
Or these ones that he had to send out to fix the other ones.
We already paid those, that was around eight thousand dollars. This is his actual bill for this month, I mean, for this year. But the problem is, he is about eight thousand dollars short, and the reason he's short is because we paid those extra bills. So either I'll pay it next year, or you can let me pay it this year, I don't, I'm just.
I mean, I think we gotta pay it, I don't wanna put it, I don't wanna put it in next year's, cause that means increasing his budget next year, I'd rather just transfer that contingency and pay it, but you know, I, I hope that Intrinsicor, or somebody's gonna reimburse us for that postage. They screwed their stuff up.
Why didn't they get the bill in on time for the payroll run, pay run?
It was sent December fifth. When did it come up to us?
Oh, the bill too, um, it was Friday.
December twenty, yeah.
Should I pay it?
Uh, we gotta pay it, I mean, it's an.
I don't wanna pay it.
You don't wanna pay?
No.
Do you want me to lap for the next year's budget?
I wanna, I'm, I won't vote for a budget that increases postage.
I don't wanna pay it, because he had time to get the bills in, and I'm sick and tired of people turning their bills in late. And, you know, we did our pay run for the end of the year, and it wasn't in there, and so, tough. Let him figure out how to pay for it.
Why can't we put in the budget, or take it out of his budget, next year's budget, without increasing the budget? And then if he goes, and then if he goes over.
And then the end of the year, he'll be over, and we'll be doing this all over again. Of course, I won't be voting on that budget, so, I don't care.
I mean, I agree with Chris, they need to get it in here on time, we can take it out on next year's budget, it's not gonna really matter, we gotta pay it one way or the other. But you don't have to write a separate check.
Put a cover letter with the check, indicating the reason it's late is because Chris Estes was unable to properly process his bills in timely manner. With the check. Alright, what else?
Are we gonna have late fees?
Hey, I wanna talk about that too, okay.
You're on fire, man.
Yeah. Well, I see all these bills come through, and time and time again, we get these bills, and we're paying twice a month, and we're paying late fees on more stuff than I can shake a stick at.
Who are we paying late fees on?
There's all kinds of vendors we're paying late fees on, and it's because people aren't turning their bills in on time.
I thought we put a policy on that.
Well, the vendors are not showing us staples, um, credit card companies, they're not gonna give us, we don't pay finance charges.
No, I understand that, but I thought we had a policy, and we were gonna implement against the people who failed to process their bills timely.
We did on the, you had to get your reimbursements in here within three months per.
First time we were having a problem with credit cards, so what? Are these not credit cards that people?
I mean, we've got the money, let's get the bills paid on time, so we don't have this crap.
Well, the problem is, as I understand it, the bill goes, I just pick on you, Larry, cause you're sitting here, the bill goes to Larry, it doesn't go to Debbie. It goes to Larry, and Larry is on vacation. So Larry doesn't look at the bills, and then he gets, he gets back, actually, let's use Joyce, Joyce is on vacation, so Joyce doesn't get, doesn't process the bills till she gets back, and then Larry's on vacation, so Larry doesn't sign off on the bills till he gets back, now they're late.
And we had our local phone bill, that worked too, on the thirty-first, our end of check ran below the forty-four, so we got late charges on it, I mean, you're not gonna satisfy all of the vendors, even paying twice a month, I mean, they all have different due dates, you know what I'm saying?
If we tell our vendors that we pay on the fifteenth and the thirtieth, and that we will not pay finance charges or late fees, and if they don't wanna do business with us, then fine, we aren't gonna do business with them.
But it's not hard, I mean, I've done this, you can call a credit card company, you've called a utility company, even say, here's the date, here's the date I want my account to close, and here's the date I want the payment due, so that we can always hit it. And if it's just happens to be that United Telephone, whoever they are now, Century Link.
Well, yeah, it's not like having a kid, you can pick your due date.
Yeah. It's never been a problem, if there's something, I mean, if there's a particular account that we're having that problem with Debbie, then we ought to address it. But, you know, my view is this, if we're hitting hit for finance charges because a elected official or department head is not processing your bills in a timely manner, well, department heads, they get to sit right here and answer our questions. And if you've got department heads that are not getting their bills in, I want them right here, and I wanna have a discussion with them. Plus, it's coming up time for annual performance reviews, and I want that in there too. If it's elected officials, I got a simple solution for that, you tell me how much elected official A, B, C had finance charges this year, and I'll just take it right out of the budget for next year.
I agree, we should.
And they'll learn to process efficiently.
I mean, it's, you know, whether it's two dollars, twenty-five dollars, or whatever, I mean, it all adds up, and so, it's, it's.
I only write checks about twice a month too, I got some that are
I do too.
Due before the first, so ten a month, I'm writing them, and then I got some that are due by the tenth, tenth or fifteenth, and so, I'll make sure I write them before that, cause okay, for me, another twenty dollars is gonna add up pretty quick each time they hit me with the penalty.
If it's another elected official, it shouldn't be Debbie's responsibility to get the finance charges waived, it should be their responsibility if they're getting the bill.
They don't, but they won't do it, I mean, you can't make them do it, the only, the only, right now is the time we have leverage.
Right.
Reduce their budget by about to.
So, find out what the, if you've got somebody, if you've got demonstrable ones that were not getting paid on time, because elected officials are not submitting their bills on time, hey, I'm okay with adding a couple zeros to whatever the late fees were, and taking it out of their budget. Only Larry Vincent can I not do that to.
After we have talked, that anytime they see a financial charge, let me know, we're gonna subtract it off, we're gonna send it back to that vendor, write on there, please call if you have any problems. We're gonna put our number, and so, if, if they're not willing to take it off, then I will just throw that at them, and maybe the county's not willing to be, use you as a vendor, and see where that gets us.
Who is the problem?
There's several.
Who?
Health Department had one this last month on their staples card.
If you need us, make a phone call, let us know, Debbie.
I had a lot of our home bills, but that could be explained.
Put Chelsea on the phone.
Well, if it's, if it's a credit card, you don't have to wait till you get the statement, I mean, you can print off the statement when you're doing your, your bills, I mean, you can go online and you can get it, you can print it off, and you can turn it in with that pay run, so that it comes in, and it gets paid right. Well, I understand that, but, you know, if you're not gonna, if you're not gonna take care of taxpayers' money, you're obviously not taking care of your money either, so. I don't, I just don't have any, I don't have any sympathy for any of them, so, I mean, gotta get their bills in, and we gotta get them paid on time, and paying twice a month, that's, that's better than, I think the city does, or anybody else, they pay once a month, and so, we're paying plenty.
Well, speaking of that, I did, we do have the accounts payable runs for the first six months of two thousand fourteen, ready, and they're gonna go on your calendar. Basically, every other week, we're having it due on a Friday from the department at four-thirty, and back to us, it's either gonna be on your agenda that next Wednesday or Thursday, giving you guys more time to look at them, if you wanna look at them, I know you're out every first, the third Thursday of every month, or Wednesday, go ahead. We're working around your own schedule too, it's kinda hard.
Third Thursday every month.
No, I was just gonna say, do we need to change the dates, that we do.
Well, we're hoping this will help. At least we got six months out there. We're only having one in January, January always causes trouble for us, because of the budget body effort.
When we go.
Well, we're approving the eighth, it's not exactly late, I'm sorry, Chris.
When we go, when we go to a Windows-based system, will we be able to do some of these bills electronically, or is that?
Oh, yeah, we could do them now, basically.
Anything we can do electronically, we oughta be doing electronically, there's no excuse, I'd be writing a check and mailing it, if we can do anything electronically.
It's a setup, and we've got set up for that, it's, it's procedure on that too.
Well, I'm one of three, but I think we need to do that, and I think we need to do that post haste. I mean, credit card bills, AMRIN, those are all easily electronically payable.
They are, I mean, they are, it's a credit card, and we pay the credit card.
You just push a electronic payment to the credit card. Right out of the bank account.
Well, we're gonna have to talk to the auditors and outside auditors about pushing payments like that, uh, you know, them pulling them.
We have, we have to have some vendors. I don't know who we have credit cards with. American Express or Citibank, Bank Amer- Central Bank, whoever we have those with. We gotta be able to set up a system where you and Eric and Kristen can sit down and agree, okay, we owe five thousand dollars on this credit card. We'll, it's, it's approved, it's approved, count's payable, and just go in and go do, 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 send. And it's an EFT right out of our account. I can pay my bills that way. You pay, you can pay your bills that way. You can pay your bills. I mean, we all have that ability. That's simple.
I'd like to see us work towards that. Uh, I know Debbie's got a lot on her plate and so.
I don't know what I'm supposed to do first, because I'm gonna have the health insurance stuff pretty soon, pretty soon, make all the things.
But.
Sounds like a chore for Chelsea.
That should make it easier, Debbie. Being able to push it by EFT should make it easier.
We have to set, go through the procedures.
Is that something we could have Eric do? I mean, Eric, since he's our treasurer, is that something that we could?
He's always been pretty interested in making it more efficient.
Have Eric maybe kinda tackle that and work with you a little bit.
And.
Speak up.
I'm not ready to jump in. I'd rather wait till we get a new software.
It seems to me the procedure's really simple for this.
We're gonna have the RFP going out in March to get our new software system. I'd rather start then than to do this with our old system and then have to put it back into the new system again.
Okay. Follow that.
I mean, I can.
Are we going Windows-based, so? We'll get rid of the green screen?
Yep.
Alright. I'm done with this issue.
Sorry.
You can, you feel free to keep talking about it. I'm done with this issue. I've reached my frustration point with that one.
We'll do it with the new system come March, if you guys are okay. I mean.
I don't wanna talk about it anymore, because I'm getting irritated. Because I think you're making a big deal out of it, Debbie, and it's something simple.
Okay.
Now I get you irri- now I get you irritated too.
Ashley's just gonna ignore you.
You see what I mean? This is why I wanted to stop.
Come on, Jeff. You usually like to get right in the middle of this.
Hey, you two are doing just fine.
You see what I mean? I didn't have to stop.
Throw a gang up on her too, babe.
You know, it's like watching my kids and knowing the train wreck's about to happen and telling them, stop, 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 and then you jump in and make it worse.
Okay. I got another one, a forty that was in the county clerk's office, that her comp time should have probably been paid out under the county clerk and not transferred down to the county collective. So I just want you to know that it'd be a transfer because there wasn't enough money to pay that out. Or neither a line item, because that's gonna fall under overtime. You guys got any problem with that? Because the liability needs to be paid out under that.
Can you, uh, speaking of accounts payable, what day do you have the run set for accounts payable?
Um, I just want to go up there until.
For Jan- no, for January.
January, they're due on the thirteenth, but the run's on the fifteenth.
Can we do a due on the third? We do a due on the third?
They can't put them in until.
What are y'all standing for?
Oh, okay, okay. Cause I was gonna say, cause we could approve accounts payable right after we approve the budget, was what I was thinking. Try to make it more, make it simpler.
They can't even get in.
Okay.
What days, what days do you have for January, so?
Well, I think it's either the fifteenth or the sixteenth. Jeff, are you out on the fifteenth?
Of what?
Have a good Christmas.
Have a Merry Christmas. Run while you can.
See Jeff.
You're asking me if I know if I'm out on January fifteenth, it's fine.
They're all out on the sixteenth, seventh, eighth, nineteenth.
Fifteenth's fine.
I'm out that hole next week too.
Yeah. And that time she's running twenty-eight. So it's only gonna do one run in January.
I got whatever you wanna do.
Yeah, right.
Fifteenth?
Yeah. That's just when you guys.
Yep, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Didn't you guys want them out? We're having lunch after.
Okay.
I'm gonna be out of town. Thank you. After I made plans.
I'm going to Columbia.
You know we do this every year.
Uh-uh, I knew about the fish fry. Now my feelings are.
I didn't know you guys had. Never been invited, never knew about it.
Well, tell everybody I said Merry Christmas.
Say Merry Christmas to everyone, please. Besides, you guys will have more fun with us not there.
Well, we're gonna put Chris work when he comes up. We got a, we got some of our, um, flagship. We've not given up, so we're gonna let Chris get up.
Oh, that's nice. There you go.
See y'all.
See ya.
Okay.
And one more, um, overtime, that letter you received from the prosecutor's office. Again, there's no account for that department to have overtime, but.
Who's getting overtime?
That lady in child support. Remember that letter you got from Mark Richardson?
No.
Asking you to.
Off the head, off top of my head, I don't remember. I believe you. Oh, yeah, we talked about this.
Yeah.
That was fine. We were okay with that. It stayed in her, it was still inside her budget.
Yes, but there will be transfers.
Two hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Internal transfers. It's not our contingency, because it's internal.
Yes.
Cause it was less than their total, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that.
But you're gonna get a lot more transfers after we get the payroll done.
Alright, I'm gone, um, on Friday, so I won't be able to sign anything on Friday.
Okay.
Um, other than that, I'm here, I'm here the day after Christmas. I'm here Monday and Tuesday next week, so.
I did get some cash for estimates based on this last budget run. So, but I didn't do sales side. It's the last column, so I just wanted to put that. General fund, compared to what we budgeted, it's gonna be up this five hundred and sixty thousand. But we also have one more week worth of receipts. Public Works is actually gonna be down a hundred and eleven thousand. Law enforcement, as of right now, a hundred and ninety thousand down. But I do know there's, I talked to Kenny this morning, there's forty thousand dollar money coming in on that grant. So they're down a hundred and fifty. And again, we have a few more days of receipts to come in. So I don't want you to get too excited. Assessment down forty-nine, and EMS is up.
Okay.
But I didn't, I mean, that's just.
So this is, actual today, when?
After the last budget run, like after yesterday.
Yesterday, so that's, uh, twenty-three December, okay.
And again, we'll have one more, two weeks worth of receipts going into that.
One more week of revenue.
And I know we already have.
And why are these different? Cause we got payroll? Is that all that's left? All that's left's payroll, right?
So we're up, we're up overall, but down in some funds.
And I missed a bit of payroll there, Mark.
That's fine.
Up overall, total funds, but, I mean, I know you don't, these don't add.
But of that one ninety, we're already up another forty-some thousand. That's something there to be received.
Just it all so weird that one's up and the others are down.
It is very hard. Percentage-wise, I guess I could've done it percentage-wise, because obviously that's the big one. And I am off quite a bit. But when you try to figure these, you seen how many bills that were coming through on that last run?
Oh, yeah.
Rogue Bridge killed me on that last run with million dollars.
They paid out a million dollars all at once and.
Oh, and.
An asphalt, uh, overlay.
And, and I can't.
They all came, they all came in right at, on one bill, so.
And that really messed up my investment stuff with the T-bills too.
We need to probably plan for that a little bit better next year.
I don't know why you, why I need to talk to you. Why would we be waiting till December to pay asphalt?
Well, they just, they didn't get to it till late. I mean, they were paving and it was October, I think.
Weather was bigger this year.
Yeah, and, uh, and then they were pushing to get it done and they, I mean, once they started paving, they were paving and, of course, they were, part of that was too, they did, uh, Mount Carmel. And they were paving that roller compacted concrete out there.
Yeah.
And so they, they were tied up. That was the same company, Jefferson Asphalt, was doing that too, so.
So I know they were just paving right before the bad weather and Russell.
It was, it was a weather, I mean, it really was a weather issue this year. It was so wet and cold this summer.
Got them late and then they probably got bombarded with a lot of work and then they were just.
Yeah.
Cause I know they were, this, cause the city always goes first and we do that jointly. And the city always goes first, cause we kinda piggyback. So that the equipment can stay and it makes it cheaper for both of us. And they were way behind, because they couldn't get on a lot of the stuff they needed to do because of the weather.
I just figured maybe Joyce was, she, she had sick time and then they had bunch of issues out there, so.
Alright, you got anything else?
Nope.
Sorry, Debbie. I apologize.
Uh, courthouse. Own business you wanna bring up?
Oh, shit, I was gonna put that on the agenda too.
Let's take it next week.
Give me, do you have one of them drawings with you? Cause I wanna draw it up so that they know what we're talking about.
I entertain a motion to stand recess.
So moved.[1772.19]